The public comment, is there any public comment tonight?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Next item is public comment, is there any public comment tonight?
No.
Okay, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Make a motion, will you approve the consent agenda?
Okay.
It's been moved in seconds, is there any further discussion? In favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same side. Motion carries four zero. Next item is presentation regarding Region Reimagine by Program Dr. Christy Rodriguez. Welcome.
Thank you, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners, thank you for having me this evening and for taking the time to hear about a very important initiative called Region Reimagine. What Region Reimagine is, you may have heard some prior presentations, I'm gonna build upon the foundation that's already been set, but kinda take it in a little bit different direction. What Region Reimagine is, is a community and economic development planning effort, including three counties, Gary County, Potawatomi County, and Riley County. The goal behind what Region Reimagine is trying to accomplish is working together identifying what the needs are and going through a planning process. So although some business leaders have already identified, hey, you know what, we see some trends and we don't like what we're seeing, we want to move the needle the other direction. I began, first of all, I'm Christy Rodriguez, but I began just three months ago, and I've been on a listening tour, trying to learn as much as I can about every single community and working towards identifying what those priorities are, but I'm just at the very beginning. In the three counties, what we are doing, business leaders from throughout the three counties participated in some efforts, and some efforts are just beginning. As this process moves forward, it's gonna be an evolving process where it takes different shapes and forms as we move forward. But the goal is, if more than one jurisdiction has a very similar need, then to me, it kind of rises to that regional level, and then at that point, there's a decision point. Are there things that we can do collectively to then leverage the resources to save ourselves some money, maybe resolve something in a more efficient way, but ideally to leverage resources where we can resolve some challenges that we have as a region and working towards regional prosperity. So of the listening tour, I've just been here three months, and I came from Texas, but this is my second time back to Kansas, and my family and I, we love Kansas, so we're very excited to be back. But what I've been trying to do is meet as many people as possible. So on the screen, you can kinda see a sample of some of the folks that I've been meeting with, because I can't be successful, and this effort can't be successful unless I understand the dynamics and what your needs are. So I've, I met with Alan when I first got here, we've met with Lindsay. One of the key things is getting the right people at the right seat at the table, not having too many conversations until the structure is formed in the right way. So when I looked at, I came on board and I was told, okay, well, we have some research, we've had some studies, Market Street put together Greater Manhattan Project, out of that, they put together a plan, and there's been a lot of motivating people in Manhattan to move the needle the certain way. But I got here and I said, you know what, we don't have all the right people at the table. We need to make sure that we have open invitation and we get the right people at the table and structure it in a way where we can have real valuable feedback from each community. So that's what we've been working towards. One of the structure that's kind of outlined here, here's the main concepts that we're working towards. Talent attraction and retention, entrepreneurship and innovation, quality of place, built environment, and then eventually, once we know what our main needs are and what those priorities are, and if the timelines align, and if, you know, then there may be some advocacy efforts that we need to be working towards. So there is a working group that's been formed for each of those areas, and I'm a very visual person, so I took a highlighter and I said, okay, how many people from Gary County are on here, how many people from Potawatomi, how many people from Riley? And so from there, I said, okay, no, we got some work to do, I need to go build some relationships. Teresa Bramlich has been serving on the implementation committee, Tom Hollis is a new member of that group, and they serve kind of like an advisory board to me, to help guide me to the place where we can really start making some progress, but to basically launch the process. As time goes by, and once we feel like we're moving in the right direction and things are launched, I feel that the implementation committee makeup will change completely. But for now, that's what got us started, and for each one of those work groups, we went back through and Teresa had given me some names and some other folks and said, okay, here's some key people that we think could get involved in this. So the quality of place work group is one of those that has really structured it in a way that I think is gonna be really beneficial to Junction City, hopefully all of them will be. But what we're doing is, for quality of place, there is a local quality of place group that has started, they just had their first meeting this last week, to talk about from a local perspective, what it is that, that the leaders in the community and community stakeholders feel that we could do to take and make improvements. What are, what are those needs, what are those priorities? And then we gotta go through that planning process to then identify that, and then, once, and we're doing the same thing in Wamigo and Potawatomi County, and then Manhattan has some groups as well, and so, once we go through that, we'll line it all up and say, what are those items that reach that regional initiative level? From there, then we'll begin implementation. So the group that just met this last week, here are a list of those that are currently serving on there, but it doesn't mean this is the final list. Like I said, this is gonna be an evolving process where it takes many different shapes and forms, and what I'm asking of you tonight is to think through, who are those movers and shakers in the community that you feel should be at the table for any discussions related to any one of those work groups? Talent attraction, retention, entrepreneurship and innovation, built environment, quality of place, and then last, advocacy. So we are in the process of forming the local group, it'll continue to grow. Eventually, what we'll do is identify where there's gaps or barriers, and then we'll work towards trying to identify, how do we overcome some of those challenges that we have? An example that's been talked about, just to give it some context, is the, we had some healthcare providers get together and they said, hey, you know what, we know, just amongst the three organizations, we're short thirty nurses. So, and then they listed off a few more providers, and they said, you know what, between six other healthcare providers, we know we're probably sixty short. Well, Manhattan Area Technical College has a nursing program, they can graduate about twenty-five per semester, or per class, and they're turning away a lot of nurses. Well, as a region, we need healthcare. So what are those things from the, maybe it's a stackable curriculum, from USD level prepping, tech college, community college, all the way up to university? Identifying what are those barriers, is it resources, what are those things? And then work together, making sure that we have all the right people at the table to then work towards a solution. The Flint Hills Regional Council is a partner, I get a lot of questions about Flint Hills Regional Council, they're a partner, but they're different. Flint Hills Regional Council is an entity in itself, what I'm trying to do is, I'm not an entity, I'm just an initiative. So what that means is, Flint Hills Regional Council has the ability to apply for grants and get resources, whereas there may be things that they have prioritized and can start moving forward to help us in certain efforts, but from a funding perspective. They recently had gotten a grant called, and they put together a website called Communities Call Home, this is one of the items that was identified as a part of what Market Street had put together, but basically, it's a website that then, if someone is interested in moving to the area, it provides community profiles for every community within their region, and if someone's about to move here, you can say, okay, well, I may work here, but I can live over here, or vice versa. So it gives some basic information, especially for human resource staff, to then direct new people that are coming into the area, some information about the region. So what we're doing, we will be building a website, basically from scratch, we will eventually, once we have gone through the planning process, identify what the measures are of success, so we'll be building a dashboard so we can communicate back out progress that we've made. There'll be a series of videos that we then produce, and then the key, most important thing is the leaders retreat. So I'm hoping that many of you are able to attend the leaders retreat. There should be about two hundred and fifty, weather permitting, people attending the leaders retreat later this week, and what's important about that is, I'm planning out four different breakout sessions, and in each session, we will be drilling down at key questions to get input from each county. The built environment and quality of place are very geographic specific, so of the input that we'll be receiving, we will know exactly what information came from Gary County versus Potawatomi versus Riley. Then I'll take all that information back and be able to line it up for my next steps. Talent attraction and retention, as well as entrepreneurship and innovation, we're looking at that as a broader-based picture of what can we do. So there'll be key questions that kinda drill down at what our needs are, and then what we're gonna do is make sure that the structure is set up with the right people at the table, and then we'll take it to the next step to then help prioritize everything that we are seeing. So once again, what I'm asking you to do is to think through who you feel should be involved in any one of these groups, there may be focus groups, one might be housing, I know that every community has different challenges as it relates to housing, but let's drill down further, and if there's something that, that Region Reimagine can do to assist with that, we would welcome that, so there may be some focus groups. And I guess I'll leave it at that, I tried to cram it as much as I could. Does anyone have any questions?
The important city commissioners will be there this weekend, so they'll be very helpful.
You mean all, all? Okay, all right, great, thank you very much.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Next item is new business, consideration of the Safe Routes to School Plan, Mr. Ibarra.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, we are looking for approval for the Safe Routes to School Plan, it was done by the Flint Hills MPO, and with me tonight, I have Jared Tremblay with the MPO, and he will just go over the plan with you. What we're looking for is that the, the district attorney currently has a Safe Routes to School Plan, but it was done in 2008, and it needs to be updated. The Flint Hills MPO has spent the last year collecting the data and preparing the report and highlighting the needs of the Safe Routes to School Plan Phase One, and in order to get any kind of funding from KDOT, we will have to have this plan updated, and so we're looking for approval, from the commission for the approval of this plan, and I'll let Jared, go ahead and make that presentation on that plan.
Thanks, Ray. Good evening, my name is Jared Tremblay, I'm with the Flint Hills MPO, as Ray had said this evening. I just wanted to give an update, and that's really what this was about, like he had said, it'd been ten years since the plan had first been approved by the commission, and we just thought it was time to update it, to bring it in line with our other plans across the entire region, Manhattan, Potawatomi County, Wabunsee, so everybody was on a level playing field and had had an update in the near term. And the old plan really had focused on the engineering side, where are sidewalk gaps, where are people walking? We're gonna talk more tonight about, less about the engineering and more about the other parts of the plan, and so just a little, thank you, just a little brief history, there's, like I said, it was begun in 2008, we started the update in 2017, and we're here tonight to get that approved, and just so you know, there are two phases of Safe Routes to School, Phase One is a report, Phase Two is construction. You can't build it, you can't get funding if it's not in Phase One, and so that's why we're here to update. All of you, can you all see this, do you have the slides? Okay.
Yeah.
I'll just go through. That's what I'm doing. I think, can we make it to the full page, I think I'm quite zoomed out all the way.
Next one.
Thank you. Okay, so here you can see, we're gonna talk a little bit, not really about education encouragement, or enforcement, tonight, we're gonna talk more about evaluation, and again, not the engineering, but these are the five Es of Safe Routes to School, education, encouragement, enforcement, evaluation, and engineering. A good plan has all five of those covered. And so we're gonna skip along, this is available on our website, if you wanna do some heavy reading into it, it's very exciting. Here we go, so we did a parent guardian survey that we sent out with the help of the USD, we sent it electronically to every fourth grade guardian or parent in the district, as well as in person through the class, and so we received some responses, seventy-eight of them to be exact, and we have those summarized and ran some, a little bit of analysis on those, and the reason we did fourth graders is severalfold, first being that a child's eleven years old, old enough to have a little independency, many people feel comfortable with them walking to school, we're not talking about kindergartners. Second is that, when we first used this survey, it was put together by a researcher at K-State, and the national standard was fourth grade, so we're sticking with that, so when we look across the region again, we'll be looking on par against everyone. So I just wanna highlight a few points of information here. Out of those surveyed, about sixty-eight percent of the children are driven to school in the morning, however, in the afternoon, only forty-three percent are driven home. So that twenty-five percent difference, that's where we see in the afternoons, children are walking more, and some of them are taking a bus more, but about seventeen percent increase in the afternoon of kids walking home from school versus to school, and that's pretty normal across the region and the United States, quite honestly. Going on and looking at, you know, what are parental concerns, why are, why are they, why are children not walking to school more, what can be done? Sixty-five percent of the parents felt that there's a large road that their children have to walk near or cross, forty-five percent said there's an intersection without a crosswalk, they just didn't feel like it was a proper environment that they could let their child walk in. And so, parents see this, they experience it, and then that leads to concerns, and what we've really learned with Safe Routes to School recently is that the engineering is much easier, you have a sidewalk gap, everyone sees the problem, you fix the problem, voila. That's not the way it is, these other Es are more perceptual. There was just a high-profile case of a kidnapping in Wisconsin that has been all over the news, that sort of thing sticks with people, and why would you want, put your child in danger? And so, but the truth is, is that this is a federally funded program that encourages children to walk and back to school, it's to help fight obesity, increase focus in school, just as an anecdote, in 1969, well over half the students in the United States walked to school, now it's thirteen percent. Many, many problems have come along with the lack of exercise, if a child walks to school one mile each way, that's two-thirds of their daily exercise without doing anything else in their life, just to do something they have to do anyway. So an active lifestyle really makes a healthier environment. But anyway, parents here, some of them are feeling like it's not safe, and so, you know, they have to cross this busy road, or there's no crosswalk, whatever it might be, that leads to about seventy-seven percent of parents feeling that their child will be hit by a vehicle, and sixty-five percent afraid or feel likely that their child will be abducted. Now that sounds absurdly high, but we have other schools where it's almost a hundred percent. So how do we fight something like that? How do you change a parent's perception? I have a parent, I don't wanna stick my child in danger, how do we, how do we start to fight those things? And that's really what this report's about, and we'll get into that. So on top of that, on top of that parental survey, we also took counts at different schools, I did, as well as, we have some interns that did the work as well, you just go out and you just count students, where are they walking, when are they walking, how many of them are walking? And so we got those numbers, here's a good example, you can see in the morning in the orange, there was eighteen students walking to Grandview Elementary, in the afternoon, that jumped to sixty-nine, quite a, it's much more convenient, school starts about the same time as work, school gets out quite a bit earlier than work, and it's really very common sense when you think about it. So we took this information and we combined it with some GIS layers, we worked with Troy Livingston and GIS, and we updated that file layer, and we created a sidewalk layer for the city of Junction City, and we basically said, okay, where are students walking, are there gaps in the network? That should become, that should become a new, an engineering project, and we add that into the long list that Ray has, and basically, the idea with those projects is, if the city decides, like you have in the past, you wanna put some money in, KDOT has a transportation alternatives grant program, which is an eighty-twenty split currently, not currently, very soon, Buje Trail will be extended and then extended along south of Playground Park and crossing over, the idea there being to connect Playground Park and Homer's Pond into one park, they're so close, but right now, there's not a great connection across Eisenhower, hopefully the roundabout helps as well. So these are the types of things, so that's really what that update was about. I can answer more questions if you're interested, we will be going to talk with the USD in the next few weeks here to update it from their side, really getting into the education encouragement, that's, that's more of an in-classroom, in-school sort of thing here, so it's kinda, it's kinda both, the city and the district.
I'll put you on the spot, Jared.
Please.
You know, Ray's talking about the roundabout we're considering, are gonna do at Eisenhower and McFarland.
Yep.
And of course, one of the concern I get from the public is, is the track, is safety.
Yeah.
And I know you've done some research on this, can you talk about-
Safety for vehicles?
No, for, for the kids.
For the kids, okay.
Just, since the public is gonna be watching this on tape and everything else, how does a roundabout in, in, through the area there, increase safety for pedestrians?
Well, number one, it generally slows traffic down quite a bit, right now, people are going thirty to forty miles an hour north-south on Eisenhower, you can't do it, you have to slow down. We've looked at roundabouts all across the region, including here in Junction City, we go from having, sometimes lowering the number of accidents, oftentimes about the same number, but what we see is a complete reduction in injuries, you go from T-bones at high speed to fender benders at an angle, it really improves vehicle, vehicle-to-vehicle safety. Pedestrians, there is a concern there, there are some really good standards of what can be done. There are certain locations, I'll be honest, where the pedestrian safety can be a concern, but I will say that with the project that's about to be started in May, that crossing that's currently at McFarland, we're putting in a hawk signal and a proper crossing closer to the elementary school, so hopefully, most of the student traffic will be removed from that roundabout specifically. That answer your question?
Yeah, I mean, since I had you here anyhow.
Yeah, no, it-
That's for, yeah.
It can, you know, quite honestly, at rush hour, at five fifteen, five-ten in the afternoon, it can be a little hairy for a pedestrian, but ninety percent of the time, it's fantastic, because it's much slower traffic than what is there otherwise.
I have one question for you.
Yes.
When you spoke of it being a federally funded program.
Yes.
So does that mean that it'll be one-hundred percent funded?
No, it is eighty-twenty.
Eighty-twenty, okay.
So it's, it's federal money, federal highway is the funding source, it goes to KDOT, KDOT administers that, we should be hearing back in the next month, few weeks, about this last year's round of grants, but KDOT does administer that, and so you're going up against everybody in the state, it's highly competitive, it's gotten a lot more competitive in the last few years, people are seeing it as a great source of money, it helps the schools, it helps the city build things, it's a, it's a great program.
What's a typical grant request dollar amount?
So Safe Routes to School is capped last time, it was a two-year grant process, a two-year grant cycle, and it was capped at five-hundred thousand dollars in money, so about two-fifty a year was the year before, is what it was, so, it's a substantial amount of money.
Per project.
Per project, and so, for example, you guys put in for one project, which was the extension that trail and down, Manhattan put in for a package of five projects, under one project, and those were funded, Potawatomi County did one project as well, so you can put in, you know, at four different, five different schools into one project, as long as it falls underneath of that max limit. And you don't have to max it out, but most people do.
I think you'd be silly not to.
Yeah, it's four to one, so it's a good deal.
Any other questions?
No.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, the last thing I forgot to say is that this, while you're approving it, it is a living document, there'll be updates, there'll be changes as we see fit, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? Make a motion, we approve the Safe Routes to School Plan.
Okay.
Can you put a date on that for 2019?
Is 2019 or 2018?
I'm sorry?
This is gonna be a 2018 or 2019 plan? For the minutes.
We can do 2019, that's my end, it's 2019.
Sounds good.
Sorry, just thought I'd clarify.
No problem.
As amended.
Next item is moved in seconds, is there any further discussion or comment?
No.
All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Next item is consideration of the eight grant easements for the construction of the ten-foot pedestrian bike trail along West Eighth Street.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, on October twentieth, twenty-seventeen, the city commission approved a grant from KDOT to construct a ten-foot pedestrian bike trail from the intersection of West Eighth Street and Rucker Road along West Eighth to Eisenhower, and from Eisenhower to Homer's Pond. As part of the project, the city needed to acquire eight permanent and temporary construction easements to construct a ten-foot pedestrian bike trail. The city has acquired those eight easements and need to get the eight easements recorded and registered to Deeds Office prior to the KDOT letting the trail project. With your approval of these eight easements, KDOT will have us, will set a bid date, letting date of May twenty-second, 2019, for this project, and there's no impact on the budget, and I'd be happy answering questions you may have.
Well, I appreciate yours and Mr. Osborne's horse trading to get this done, there was a lot of projects to do along there, so we appreciate your patience and effort. Anybody else?
I had one question to make, I was trying to visually just see one thing, when you make that turn coming on to Eisenhower, is the trail on the west side or the east side?
The trail will be on the west side, when you come, on Eisenhower, it'll be on the west side till you get through the roundabout, and once you get through the roundabout, then you'll go on the east side, and then once you get to the east side, where the Devon Center exit comes out, that's where the new crosswalk and that new flashing beacon will be for the allow the pedestrians to get across to Homer's. Does that make sense? On West Eighth Street, it'll be on the north side as you come down, and then once you get to Eisenhower at the high school, at Eighth and, Eighth and Eisenhower, then you will make that turn, you'll be on the west side still, and then you'll go across that west side all the way to the roundabout, and then from the roundabout, you'll go to the east, transfer back over to the west.
Clarify. Eighth Street on Eisenhower to Sixth Street, Fifth Street, we really don't make any changes there?
No, that'll be the same walk right there.
Just because there's no over there.
Correct. And then we'll go, we acquire, we'll acquire some easements on the roundabout along Mr. Montgomery's, and that's, we'll go along that path to the roundabout, through the roundabout, and then switch back over to the east toward Lincoln School and down Denver, Denver, the Devon Center.
So the house or property before Mr. Montgomery's, it's not that, that little sidewalk, is any of that going to be part of that trail, or?
Yeah, that's part of that trail, and then we will do away with the crosswalk at Fifth and Eisenhower.
Thank you for-
You're welcome, Mr. Fitzgerald.
Anyone else?
No.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the eight grant easements for construction, for constructing a ten-foot pedestrian bike trail along West Eighth Street as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in seconds, is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners.
Next item is consideration of the request to approve the donation of a mass casualty ambulance to the Junction City Fire Department from the Shell Oil Refinery of Deep Park, Texas.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. I've come before you this evening to request approval for donation of what is known as a mass casualty ambulance. In our region, we have a lot of natural disasters that occur, we can even have man-made disasters. For our EMS system to respond, it takes a lot of agents- For our EMS system to respond, it takes a lot of agencies to join in. This is going to give us an opportunity to provide what is called a mass casualty ambulance. This will allow us to triage and treat patients through a process and also be able to set up a lot faster. At this... This unit is a large unit. It can carry three patients. We can treat two ALS patients at a time. I have fifty patients out front where we can treat them and triage them for what we need to do. It will allow us to be a Ford element for response to emergencies. This unit is available to us through Shell Oil Company, India Park, Texas. The agencies in Texas and the emergency service districts in Texas have changed their methodology of working to where now they actually deploy more of what I would say would be mobile emergency rooms than triage centers. Each emergency service district has multiple onsite care. Some units have a tractor-trailer that expands out to an emergency room. Some have ambulances. Some have mobile field hospitals. This unit is becoming available to us. It will give us flexibility to support the region. We have discovered through some research that the nearest unit of this type is either in Denver or St. Louis. There is not one in the state of Kansas right now that we know of. The letter that I just gave you is from the northeast EMS region. They are in full support of helping us and supporting this. Also, the Task Force for Urban Search and Rescue for the state of Kansas, which was included in your packet, they support us having this unit and are grateful that we're even considering doing this. This is one of those things that happens that we hope never happens, but we have to be prepared if it does.
My question, chief, is in... I didn't see where it says the year on this vehicle. What are the concerns about the mechanical soundness of this vehicle? Where we get this and then, all of a sudden, we're putting... This is a, what, Freightliner tractor?
Yes, sir.
Where we have to put a lot of money in to keep this thing...
They're going to...
Or something goes bad on it or something like that?
They're going to provide us with all maintenance records. It's been maintained.
What year is it?
I think it's an eighty-eight, but it's never left the refinery. So the mileage on the... And use on the motor is minimal. But they will provide all of the maintenance records. It's been maintained up to the point that it was parked. They just don't have a use for it anymore in reference to... One of the units that they have now in a EMS unit across that region is they now use what's called a bluebird bus. And it's made to hold like twelve patients versus three patients. So they're just... They have the facilities and they have the financing in that region to upgrade to these things that we just don't have.
What would we be able to use this for in addition to a mass casualty? What... How else would you deploy this? So, you know...
Any public event.
Obviously, you know, mess.
No.
We don't... I know it's always nice to have, just like we have the SWAT truck and things like that, but it's nice to have, but it's also, you know, keeping this thing... What are we going to do to... How are we going to use it?
Well, we could use it for any public event as a first aid station because it would be fully staffed, just like an ALS ambulance. We could use it for any major event. When we have the Symphony on the Plains, when we have Sundown Salute, we'll be able to establish a medical station onsite. And Sundown Salute, I think we had during the week, I think we... Well, we had multiple calls, I do remember. And I believe we actually had one cardiac while we were there or heat stroke. So we'll have something that we can treat the patient while we're waiting for the ambulance to arrive on scene versus having the small mule, which is also part of... Which will add as part of this, but it will give us that ability to do advanced life support care on scene.
As far as we know right now, it's mechanically sound?
Yes, sir.
And, you know, we're not going to start putting a hundred thousand dollars in to repair something down the road here.
I don't... We don't see that.
I know those fixing those trucks aren't cheap.
Yes, sir.
I know Jeff can do good work on that kind of stuff, but I just know they aren't cheap.
Yeah, we're looking at probably the same maintenance schedule and maintenance costs that we have probably on one of our fire engines, which is roughly about three to four thousand dollars here, which is the fluid change and oil changes and lubes and those things that are in place on a regular basis.
I guess I'm more concerned about the electronics and hoses and belts and lots of... I mean, Jeff's not quite an eighty-eight model, but, you know, we've all got some miles on us, even if we sit in the closet for a while.
Thirty years old.
Right, so... I mean, I think it's a great tool. I just... We have to be careful.
Yes, sir.
Do these other, the Task Force Two and that sort of thing, do they help us with costs associated with taking it to, say, the Symphony on the Flin Hills or the general upkeep of a vehicle like this that is kind of meant to be used in the district?
If it's deployed through the state system, we will get reimbursed for all use and any repairs or anything that occurred during the event. That's part of being part of the task force in the northeast region is if we have an event, we get called up, they want that resource. Then the personnel, the equipment, the logistics and all that are handled through the state and we get reimbursed for it. We did the same thing with the Hutcheson Wildland Fire and we were reimbursed for that.
Any further questions, Chief? What's the will of the commission?
Make a motion to approve the donation of a mass casualty ambulance to the Junction City Fire Department from Shell Oil Refinery of Deep Park, Texas.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four-zero.
Thank you.
Next item is consideration to purchase three 2019 Chevy Tahos from Don Hatton Chevrolet and to declare the 2016 Chevy Tahoe as surplus. We'll move to sell the vehicles by auction or the transfer of vehicles to other city Junction City departments. Chief Prezy?
Mr. Mayor Commissioners, the police department seeks approval to purchase three 2019 Chevrolet Tahos and declare three 2016 Chevrolet Tahos as surplus and approve the sale of vehicles by auction or allow them to be given to the other departments within the city if they are needed. All three new vehicles will have four-wheel drive capability and will be used as normal everyday patrol vehicles. These vehicles were discussed with you during our budget process last summer. The police department started driving Chevrolet two-wheel drive Tahos in 2004. They have demonstrated a history of reliability and toughness due to the truck chassis they are made on. Patrol vehicles with three years of service have between... Now have between eighty and ninety thousand miles and two-hundred thousand engine clock hours. Keeping them in service causes excessive maintenance costs during the fourth and subsequent years of service. On November twenty-seventh, 2018, the JCPD released a request for bid for three 2019 sport utility vehicles. The request for bid was placed on the city website and in the Daily Union on November twenty-seventh. The bid opening was scheduled for December twenty-first, 2018 at 3:00 PM. On that date and time, the following bid was received. That bid was only from Don Hatton Chevrolet Wichita, Kansas, in the amount of thirty-six thousand, six-hundred and eight dollars and forty cents each or one-hundred-and-nine-thousand, eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and twenty cents. The review of the bids identified the spec... The bid specifications were met and set forth in the bid process. These vehicles will be purchased with general funds. There could be additional income from the sale of the 2016 Chevrolet Tahos if other departments within the city do not want them. These vehicles were purchased with general funds, so if they are auctioned, those funds can be put back into the general fund. There is no charge to the city of Junction City by the auction company to list the items for sale. And in the past, those vehicles tended about forty-five-hundred to five-thousand each. Our recommendation is the purchase of three 2019 Chevrolet four-wheel drive Tahos from Don Hatton Chevrolet and to declare three 2016 Chevrolet Tahoe surplus and approve the sale of the vehicles by auction or allow other departments within the city to have them. I'm open to answer any questions on this or any of our fleet that you may have.
These prices are lower than last year?
These prices are about two thousand lower than our last ones we purchased. And I believe those were in 2017. Last year, we purchased two Chevrolet Impalas and a Ford.
Any other questions?
Make a motion to purchase the three 2019 Chevrolet four-wheel drive Tahos from Don Helton Chevrolet and to declare the three 2016 Chevrolet Tahos surplus and approve the sale of the vehicles by auction or allow other departments within the city to have them.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion or comment? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four-zero.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Next item is consideration of the request to purchase twenty-two computers from the SHI International Corporation, the amount of twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and two cents.
Mr. Mayor Commissioners?
Give us your two cents worth, Mr. Brown.
How are you? Once again, it's time for my annual appearance before you to request a bulk purchase of the computer... Computers for the city. These are all scheduled to be replaced as part of our five-year replacement program. And SHI is running a special in the month of January where we buy ten computers and get one for free. So we have twenty computers that need to be replaced, so we'll get twenty-two computers. Actually, we did look at some other sites just to make sure they weren't upping the price. In actuality, the price of six-hundred and twenties... Or, excuse me, eight-hundred-and-twenty-seven dollars and sixty-nine cents is about forty dollars cheaper than their competitors. So we're actually saving more money that way as well. If we were to purchase just twenty computers from the competitors, this price right here is actually seven-hundred dollars left or eleven-hundred dollars left, depending upon which company you went with. Plus, we get two free computers, so I think it's a no-brainer. And I request permission to perceive of the purchase.
Questions? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the purchase of the twenty-two computer system from SHI International Corp. in the amount of twenty-two thousand, five-hundred-and-seventy-six dollars and two cents.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, respond by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries four-zero.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner comments? Mr. Brown?
Looking forward to leaders retreat this weekend. I won't be able to attend the Martin Luther King thing on Monday. I have a meeting I have to go to in Cheney, Kansas on Friday for work, so I won't be able to make that. And Commissioner Underhill has attended the Flin Hills Regional Council meeting for me this month, so I'll let him address that. I have nothing else, Mayor.
Very good, thank you. Commissioner Fitzgerald?
Last week, we had our monthly Military Affairs Council meeting. We talked about a couple of items. The... One of the things that Fort had talked to us about at this meeting was working together with some intergovernmental agency agreements. So, for example, recycling and the vehicle maintenance was a couple of things that they were talking about with the interserver... Or intergovernmental service agreements. They also... On Fort, so if you're looking for jobs, they have a career fair coming up on February the first on Fort Riley. Also, they've asked us if we could please share with our community that they are in need of gate guards, GS six. They're probably paying forty thousand a year. They went ahead, if you're retiring from the military, that they waived that one-hundred-and-eighty days that you have to wait to get a job. So they do need gate guards on Fort Riley. Also, next Thursday, January twenty-fourth, is our next MAC breakfast at the Marriott. If you're interested in attending that, you need to get with the chamber and let them know. Our guest speaker will be our new MAC Director, Craig Bender, so that should be a good MAC breakfast. Today, I had the honor to be able to attend the casing of the colors of First Brigade, Combat Aviation Brigade, and the First Sustainment Brigade. So they case the colors when they leave. So we just want to, you know, all the soldiers are starting to leave for deployment. We just keep them in our thoughts and prayers and we've assured them that while they are gone, that we will help to take care of their families and we'll be here for them and for the soldiers when they return also. On January the twenty-fifth, Fort Riley has their monthly or their retirement ceremony. That is a good opportunity and time to visit with soldiers that are retiring that could potentially make Junction City, Gary County their forever home once they leave the military. So I will be there to encourage them to please stay in our communities. As Commissioner Brown mentioned, Martin Luther King celebration is on Monday, January the twenty-first, at the C.O. Hoover Opera House at ten o'clock. That's always a wonderful celebration, so if you get a chance to, you know, please come out. And the last thing I'd just like to say is this past weekend, the Veterans of Foreign Wars had their state convention here in Junction City, Gary County. They probably had a hundred-and-fifty or so veterans in the auxiliary that came. So they're here for a couple of days to, you know, for their convention, but they also did get out in our community, so they had great things to say about Junction City, Gary County. Mayor, that's all that I have.
Thank you. Last, Mayor.
Yep, as Commissioner Brown said, I did go to the Regional Council meeting for him. Once again, it was a marathon meeting. We were there for three and a half hours, but...
How that happens.
It's funny how that happens. Good planning on his part, but they have a lot of projects going on.
Agent experience.
They have a lot of projects going on. They are moving forward with their new budget here for 2019, so they plan on being a little bit more sound in what they're doing financially. And then, also, the... One of the big things that came about at that meeting was Lyon County had chosen to not participate in that. Their representative was disappointed in that because he feels that that's a really good organization, so Metropolitan Planning Organization doesn't meet this month and Chamber meets later on this month as well. So looking forward to the leaders retreat and learning more about Regions Reimagined, so that's it.
Thank you. I was very pleased to hear about the Safe Routes to School update tonight. That's a really big deal. When I came on the commission back in 2011, I really wanted to get a lot of sidewalks done, but we couldn't. I mean, we're pulling our pockets out of our pants because we had nothing. Now, we're starting to get some monies together and I think we need to maximize that program as much as we can every year because you can't walk a block in this town and not see a sidewalk that doesn't need something. I mean, that's everywhere. So I think in the coming years, we need to... And we did that in our budget for this year, start putting more money into sidewalks. I think it's really key for our community. The expectation that the homeowner is going to replace that sixty-year-old sidewalk that's been buckled up by elm trees, probably not going to happen. And I feel bad that, you know, some people have been blighted because of that, but I know there's another vehicle to do it. I'm not sure we... You know, it's a fine line drawn between, you know, what is the city covering, what is the... What's on the homeowner? So we'll have further discussions about that. Last year in August, I brought up an idea about giving land bank lots to members of USD four-seventy-five that are working for them. And there was quite a bit of public outcry at that time by existing homeowners on the west side of town that were paying specials and so on. And just as I predicted, even though we've been selling them, we haven't had a flood of builders come in. Most of the lots that we've sold have been bought by existing homeowners. They bought the lot next door to them and have another yard for a... You know, more yard for the kids or a garage or a pool or whatever, which is great. But I think we need to revisit that. And I think it's coming to... And I think it's coming to, we're beginning in springtime here pretty quick, and I think we need to bring that forward. I think we've had kind of a, a trial session of six months, nearly, and, and this idea that people's houses aren't going to be worth anything is, is not true. I don't think we opened this up for everybody, and there's going to be some that, that fuss about why we're doing it. USD 475 is one of the biggest employers in the area. And we're still going to, I would still want to use this as an economic development tool to try to lure companies here to get their employees to come. I would want the, the person to pay $5,000 for the lot, build their home, get an occupancy permit, present that to our listing agent, get their $5,000 back. So that way, we're covered that we see that a house gets built, and we get something in return. If they want to buy the lot next door to them at the same time, great. You won't, you won't get your money back for that one, but you'll get it for the ones you built a house on, because we want houses built. And we're going to work even harder to try to get more jobs here. We've got a lot of things kind of cooking in the EDC that, you know, we can't really talk about, but hopefully, some good things are going to be happening here this year. So, I have, in my job, I read a lot of x-rays on, on folks that have had joint replacement surgery, and the films don't really tell you the level of discomfort that people have that have had this done. I have a new appreciation for that. I haven't had anything since last night, so that's why I've been kind of fidgeting in my chair, kind of keeping things moving. So, but doing okay, and I appreciate Vice Mayor's covering for me and, and Commissioner Fitzgerald helping out last weekend with the VFW folks. So, I'm lucky to be part of a great team, and that's all I have. Mr. Dingle?
Make an introduction real quick. Our new Human Resource Director, Lorena Pula. Lorena just moved to this area in August. Her husband is a E9 for Riley. Lorena has great experience and background in the state of Washington and other places. She's been on board, this is her seventh day, and she's a great addition to our admin team upstairs. I'm already impressed with her knowledge and working with the employees and HR, and I think we're going to move to a new level with her here, and very happy to have her here. So, she was able to stay here tonight. She has four children. Three of them are in our school district here, I believe. Yeah, so two on base and one here in town at high school. So, great addition to our area and our community, and looking forward to great things with her. Commissioner Albrecht, if you've ever heard me, he had to be gone tonight. He's attending a funeral of an ant in the state of Virginia. So, our condolences out to him. And no, I did not walk to school in 1969, because his, mine was five miles uphill both ways.
In the snow, as we get.
But it was five miles.
You should have walked.
I should have walked, I know. And then it was 17 miles to high school, so, you know.
It sounds like he needs a-
Yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mr. Steitz?
Just so the commission's aware, in the Farmers Bank and Trust case, 15 CV 237, they have filed their notice of appeal. But we'll see if they docket it appropriately and go from there. So it might be six months to a year to 18 months to see what the resolution is. But for now, things are stayed as were ruled, so we'll see.
Ms. Miller?
The only thing I have is Alan's birthday is on Monday, so everyone should wish him a happy birthday.
Happy birthday, Alan.
I hear he likes ties. Ms. Miller?
You're cool, yeah.
Chief Reese? Chief Johnson?
Nothing, sir.
Ms. Tribara?
Nothing.
Ms. Osborne? Mr. Youngers?
Nothing.
Mr. Gurman?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just an update.
There's always one.
Cox Communications is still working on Channel 3. And we're not, we're not the only one down. The school district's public access channel's not working either. So, I think it's their system that they have to send it. They're going to send that tech out tomorrow to look at ours, so.
Very well.
Hopefully, it'll be up by tomorrow, hopefully.
Mr. Peterson?
Nothing, thank you.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, and good night.